Good morning. How's everybody doing today? Today is Monday, August 26th. This is a special meeting of the Kings County Board of Suit Fighters. Matt Clark, please fill the role.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Okay, we're all five here. So would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to move.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on now to unsecured appearances. Any person may direct a board at this time on any matter of interest to the public.
I have no written correspondence and no speaker cards, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Very good. Anybody in the audience have anything to say? Nothing? Well, happy Monday then. Very good. Item three, budget hearings. Here you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew's going to be leading the the presentation, and then we'll go ahead and get started.
Start a timer.
If my mouse will function and actually let me, oh, it says it's connecting, sorry. Yeah, it just says.
I always smell a rat when your mouse won't connect.
I literally tested it about fifteen minutes ago, too, just watching that. See, it's not letting me.
Grab it by the tail. It'll work.
What did they just?
Because I knew what we had and recommended. I didn't want that to happen again. So I came here early this time.
Best played plan.
I can go ahead and get started with a little bit of our, a little bit of the introduction. So your board adopted the recommended fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Today's staff presents the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five final budget for your board's consideration. The county must submit the adopted budget resolution to the State Controller's Office by October second. We plan to bring back the budget resolution on September seventeenth. The total budget for Kings County today is five hundred and sixty million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. It is balanced and prepared under board direction. Following an overview of the budget, including a department-by-department breakdown, the board will consider temporary due pass of the final budget. This process allows for final adjustments to be made to the budget book based on today's hearings, although we do anticipate no changes. I want to express my gratitude to all the department heads who have navigated this year in the budget process. I also, a special thanks to administrative staff, Tomas, Veronica, Giselle. This is their first budget hearing. And for Matthew for picking up budget, you know, at the departure of Megan, she actually had the budget, oversaw the budget, and then Matthew took, stepped in and really navigated us through the final budget. So thank you to my staff and then to the department heads for for their patience. So here, we're going to go ahead and give a brief description of our presentation. We'll go over the budget assumptions, the final budget changes, the budget equation, general fund history, some budget charts. We'll talk about position allocation, and then we'll go over next steps. So here's a brief recap of what happened in recommended standard salary and benefit increases. Our retirement rates continue to increase in our miscellaneous groups from twenty-three percent to twenty-five percent. That's about the average two percent growth every year. Our safety retirement rates, those actually decreased a little bit, and that was due to the county issued debt in two thousand and four to pay off some pension obligation bonds. That debt actually fell off, so we reduced our rates. So that was good. We also have some American Rescue Plan Act contributions to offset some personnel costs. So there is those departments that are receiving the ARPA bonuses. There is, every department has those funds in their budget. Also, one-time revenues to offset some other expenditures in cost supply, not as revenues. There's also four million dollar transfer from ARPA into general fund under the revenue loss category. And the project home key revenues removed from our fund balance based on changes to FEMA reimbursement guidance. So if you recall, in the spring, HSA and Finance brought up an issue where HSA explained that the state has changed their stance on reimbursement for twenty-day stay on the COVID during that pandemic. So that shifted about a three million dollar cost to the county that was not anticipated. So that was all included in the recommended. And also, any funds that will be reimbursed in the future will add it to the fund balance for next year. Next slide, please. So here we have some basic assumptions. This is kind of a good overview of the final budget changes. We do have the negotiated increase for the fire union and deputy sheriff association. Our health insurance rates that increased by thirteen percent. That was approximately seven hundred thousand dollar general fund cost. So that was included as a final budget change. So my T rate increases that charged, that charges out to all departments. That was due to some agencies are no longer using county services. So, you know, that added to the rates which were reflected on final budget changes. Also, additional general fund contribution. There is four hundred thousand dollars to cover shortfall in the two thousand and five jail bond refunding. So basically, the county issued debt and was paid for by local court penalty assessments. This is scheduled to be paid off in two thousand and twenty-eight, but the decline in criminal justice fees have not kept up. So you see that as a final budget change. Other miscellaneous adjustments within departments, you know, between recommended finals, some departments reach out to us and say, hey, you know, we have these, these changes. So there's just some minor changes. And a contribution to general fund reserves of six million dollars. This was primarily due to our fund balance coming in higher than departments' estimated projections. The county builds our budget based on fund balance. So when that fund balance, when we ask departments, hey, submit your estimates, and then we actually get the actuals in August, you know, it either is the good or bad. This is a good thing. We did hit, our fund balance did grow, and so we are recommending to put that six million into reserves. And lastly, there's a one point six million dollar general fund contribution to the fire fund. That is also a change, and that was due to a few little things. There was, you know, expenses are outpacing the revenues, a little out-of-county response. Also, we just settled with fire association, so we made those adjustments in our final budget. Next slide, please. So here on this slide, we look at it vertically down. So you look on your left side, you have your adopted budget, and you look on your right side, you have the requested budget. So you see, we always like to compare it to adopted to see what, what, what happened. So on the far right, looking on the far right on the pink, you see your fund balance. That was at twenty million at the start of our fiscal year. This started in spring. Our current revenues were at three hundred and fifty-four with expenditures at three hundred and sixty-seven. Our contingencies were only at six million. So as you can tell, our revenues were not keeping up with those expenses. So that's where administration works with departments, and we bring back that recommended budget. So if you see on our next slide, again, far left is what, what was adopted in the far right. Our fund balance at that time, still twenty million dollars. Our revenues increased lightly at three hundred and sixty-three million, and our expenditures were at three hundred and seventy-one million. At that time, we grew our contingency to ten million, so we had a balanced budget, and that was the budget that was presented to your board on June eighteenth. Next slide, please. So for the final budget, you see that on the far right, our fund balance, that six million that I indicated that grew, our fund balance on August fifth, from, we got those numbers from the Department of Finance, that grew to twenty-nine point three million. Our current revenues were at three hundred and sixty-six, a slight increase, and our expenses were at three hundred and seventy-eight point five million. We're designating that fund balance with the twenty-nine million for six million to go in reserve. So you see that at, in the purple, and contingency, we were able to build those up to an extra eleven million. A lot of, we get a lot of questions on our contingencies. What ends up happening is, once our budget is adopted, most of our contingencies end up becoming what the fund balance is. And at this time, I will actually now pass it over to Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyett, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So what you're looking at here is a rolling fifteen-year history of our general fund budget equation, shown in a little bit of a different style here. So in the middle is, in the bold column there, that's kind of the overall budget. So as you can see, dating back fifteen years ago, we've, you know, more than doubled in size over the last fifteen years. So I want to bring your attention really quick to the reserve area. So you'll notice, starting in about fiscal year twenty to twenty-one, we started, you know, actually contributing to our reserves. You know, you'll notice nothing, you know, up until that point, and then all of a sudden, contributions to reserves. And so that's us taking advantage of a lot of the one-time funding that we received during the pandemic. So as you can remember, we first got the, the CARES Act money from the government, and then more recently, the ARPA funds as well. And so, you know, we've taken advantage of those to help plan for the long-term financial sustainability of the county. And then also, in addition to that, you know, we've experienced recent record-high vacancy rates here in the county. So we had lots of salary savings in the budget, and so, you know, we're able to, you know, take advantage of not realizing those expenses. So again, now with the implementation and the ongoing implementation of the Coffin Association study, you know, one can reasonably assume that those vacancy rates can, you know, diminish, therefore realizing more and more of that expense in salary and benefits. So, you know, that's, you know, one thing we've heard many, many times over the last several months from departments and employees is, you know, the low vacancy rates due to wages and things of that nature. So now that your board is addressing those, as Curia mentioned most recently with like fire and DSA, we, you know, can anticipate some of those leveling off and, you know, not having as much savings there. So as, as the good fortune falls to us, we want to take advantage of that, because we don't know, and that's going to come around again. So with that, I want to move over to the right-hand side of this graph and show the contingencies here. So what contingencies are, is this is kind of our margin of error, or our current savings for current expenditure, so to speak. So you can see kind of over time, you know, we kind of started contingencies at, you know, three point eight million at the top, you know, kind of growing into the eight million-dollar range. And then back at about fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, we started to grow those for the first time to double digits there at eleven point four million. But then you'll notice, went right back down again to what we've currently seen in the six to seven to eight million dollar range. And as you'll remember, that was the time in which we implemented raises at that time. So again, as raises increase, you know, our contingencies and our fund balance decreases, because that's more and more of our resources going towards salary and employee benefits for staffing. So that's a direct correlation there. So again, we're growing that again, due to some of those one-time revenues. And again, salary savings off to the right. Again, we do anticipate those to go down, as we traditionally have seen whenever raises do come into effect. So.
Sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
That's not just raises. Let's not just put it all on raises. That's, that's the cost to doing county business, and I don't want that just labeled on making the employees feel like they got a raise, and this, this hurt the county. That's an overall. We don't need to keep saying it's all about raises.
Okay. So in some of our better fiscal years, where we had a little bit higher contingencies, dating back to about fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had contingencies that were about four point nine four percent of the current uses. So again, contingencies are all relative to what your expenses are. So if you have, you know, high expenses, you know, you should have a high contingency, a high margin of error, a high savings for unexpected events. So in those better years where you started to see that grow, our contingencies were hovering roughly about five percent. Currently, with our contingency of eleven million, you know, you can see in our uses column, that's our current expenses. Our uses are three hundred and seventy-eight point five million. So right now, with that eleven million dollar contingency, we are at, was two percent here. Bear with me. If we applied that five percent contingency to our three, three hundred and seventy-eight point five million dollar use, our contingency would really need to be about eighteen point seven million dollars. So you can see we're, you know, a little over seven million dollars short of where our contingency, contingency should be in years in which we had better contingencies there. So we would essentially need to cut contingencies if we were to meet that. But again, it's not always, you know, feasible to do so. Again, you can kind of, you know, it, it's easy to get lost when we're dealing with numbers like this and the hundreds of millions and contingencies of eleven million, fourteen million. But if you kind of apply that to a real-world scenario, so recently, the most recent census had the median household income in Kings County of just about sixty-four thousand dollars. So if we applied our current contingency percentage, which is two point nine one percent, that would mean the average household here in Kings County would have a savings account of just under two thousand dollars. So it'd be eighteen, eighteen hundred dollars in savings. So given the economy that we're in, and given how expensive everything is, that eighteen hundred might not last very long if, you know, that's, you know, a few bad tires on your car, or a blown alternator, or heaven forbid, a loss of a job, unexpected medical expenses, stuff like that. So again, it's all relative to your operating expense. And so that eleven million dollar contingency there is really, just really, you know, in relation to what our uses are at this time. And then I want to move on to the reserves there. Curie had mentioned, we do have a contribution to reserves of six million right now. And so GFOA actually has, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, actually recommend a reserve of about two months' worth of operating expenses. So that's a sixteen point six seven percent reserve of your current year expense, of your current year expenses. And so with our current uses at three hundred and seventy-eight point five million, our county reserve target should really be sixty-three point ten million dollars. So as you can see in this chart here, we've gone many, many years without contributing to our reserves, and only started kind of actively contributing to those over the last several years. So we're a little bit behind. So right now, our reserves are only at about three point five percent of our current uses. So that leaves a thirteen point one seven percent gap in what GFOA recommends we should have versus what we currently have. So that percentage equates to a reserve shortfall of forty-nine point eight eight million dollars. And so with the ongoing negotiations that we have with staff and what your board is implementing here, you know, we, we've seen pretty substantial raises already with two bargaining groups, and your board is still finalizing those with other bargaining groups, too. So again, we want to be mindful of the long-term financial sustainability of the county as, you know, we implement a study like this, you know, so it's, we're seeing pretty significant impacts there, and we just want to plan for the long-term sustainability of those impacts well into the future.
And Mr. Chair, before he moves on, Matthew.
Yes.
So I know we're putting six point one this year, and I think that's a pretty good job. That's pretty, that's pretty big. So good work to all of you. But what's the, is that our total amount of county reserve? Or what's the total amount the county has in reserves?
So that six million, that's just the contribution of what we're adding this year. So the, the total reserve right now is about thirteen million dollars. So we're, we're well short of where we should be.
I got that.
Yeah.
And then the, so then contingencies, all those monies, do they all come from a general fund? Or meaning, the answer I'm looking for is, if those contingencies weren't used and we needed that, are those monies like the general fund that can go anywhere? Are those monies in that account that are mandated to only go to a certain department?
These are general fund contingencies, so they're at the discretion of your board as to where to allocate those.
So could one look at it in a more simple term that this year, even though we're allocating a six point one million of the reserves, that really, as we do this budget, we have six point one plus the eleven, seventeen point one million aside?
Not necessarily, because the reserves are in a designated account. And so the way I like to talk about reserves versus contingencies is, reserves is kind of a assigned fund balance, where that's more of like, you know, so again, thinking of it in real-world terms. So that's more of your long-range savings. So for like a household, that's more of like your retirement for planning for the future, where as your contingencies, that's your current savings, that's your current margin for your current operating expenses there. So those are, the, the contingencies there are more for your unexpected things that happened this fiscal year that we didn't plan for, but that we have money readily available that we can go ahead and allocate. So.
And then besides contingencies and reserves, we have one more reserve account, right? Like an emergency reserve account, a rainy day fund account?
The, the general fund reserves is our, essentially our rainy day fund.
I thought we had a pot of money that if it hit the fan, that the board could vote to unlock that money. Don't, don't we have that?
Sure, you want to answer that?
Mr. Advisor, are you referring to our CalPFA?
We don't, we don't have, see, Nevs, didn't we start a, another account, like a rainy day fund account? It might have like two or three million only in it, and.
Unless it's the CalPFA.
Maybe the pars one you're talking about, that we put one million dollars into it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I was hoping you had.
No, no, I think, I think maybe you're referring to our pars account that we opened about two thousand and twenty-one. We designated a million in there.
All right. I'm just trying to get all my numbers right. Thank you, Matthew.
Yes.
It's just real quick.
Yeah.
So you guys do have some designated fund balance and general fund, I'm thinking on some others. I mean, I know what it is as a twenty-three, but I don't know, but I think around six, seven, nine.
Yeah, and the only reason why I asked that, I was wondering if we were going to at least maybe put a hundred thousand in that account, too, or something, maybe try to grow that one a little bit, too.
Into our rainy day fund.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Eric.
You have any questions on this slide? All right, so moving along here, this chart shows your general fund net county costs by department in ascending order. So these are the departments that have the largest impact on the general fund. So again, the departments with the largest contribution to general fund. And so as you can see, again, we have the public safety departments right at the top with the highest general fund, net county cost contributions to the county, you know, continuing to signify their priority for your board here. So again, you'll see sheriff, probation, DA kind of there at the top as we kind of see year over year. However, we do have an anomaly this year that we haven't really seen in years past for this current twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and that is the general fund contribution to other funds. So you'll see that that's in the number two position this year, a close second to probation. So that's due to, as Curie mentioned, the additional one point six five million dollars that the general fund is contributing to the fire fund this year to cover a shortfall in their current operating expenses, as well as there's a one-time general fund contribution to capital of four million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act allocation that we have. So after that, then we kind of get back to our normal trends of what we see as far as the departments that have the largest impact of net county cost on the general fund. So we have our insurance, our consolidated courts, which is our defense of the accused. We have human services agency and finance. Again, all of those with, with the, with the anomaly of the contribution to other funds there, that's pretty consistent trend with what we see year over year with the departments that have the largest general fund impacts. And so moving on, this slide compares each department's fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five net county cost with the net county cost that was adopted last fiscal year. So again, these are direct impacts to general fund. I'm going to go over some of the notable increases here in some of the departments. So the largest change by far of all the departments is going to be that contribution to other funds. Again, the two primary indicators of that is that one point six five million dollar general fund contribution to the fire fund, as well as the four million dollar contribution to capital from the ARPA allocation. Next, moving on to the sheriff department, we are seeing a three point four million dollar increase, or an eleven point three four percent increase, again, primarily due to the negotiated salary and employee benefit impacts of the DSA negotiations. And then we had some vehicle rollover purchases from last fiscal year, in addition to some annual maintenance and insurance for some of the purchases like the altering vehicle and the helicopter and some of the airplane and things like that. Moving on to insurance, we have an increase of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is twenty-seven point four nine percent, primarily due to the increase in the insurance premiums that we're witnessing here. Moving on to the district attorney's office, we have an increase in general fund contributions of one point three eight million, which is twenty-nine point three six percent, again, primarily driven by the negotiated salary and benefit increases there, as well as we're seeing some decreases in the prison billing revenue due to some of the staffing shortages there in the department, as well as a reduction in the Violence Against Women Act or the VAALA Grant. So there's some grant revenue that we're no longer going to be receiving. And then the state had a clawback of their Victims of Crime Act funding, or the VOCA funding. So we're receiving less revenue in that department. So that's, again, causing a direct increase on the general fund to pick up what is being left on the table there in those areas. Moving on to the assessor, we're seeing roughly a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase, which is fifteen point seven eight percent. So we're seeing a reduction in Senate Bill Two revenue, as well as a reduction in service fees from real estate filings. Moving on to elections, this is actually a positive change here. So it's a decrease in general fund contributions of two hundred and twenty thousand from last fiscal year, which is a decrease in general fund contributions of eighteen point six zero percent. So with this being a general election year, those general election years generally bring more revenue than previous years. So there's more federal assistance to go ahead and administer those elections. So again, that's less general fund dollars that need to go to support those operations. Again, some more good news, moving And so moving on, this slide compares each department's fiscal year 2425 net county cost with the net county cost that was adopted last fiscal year. So again, these are direct impacts to general fund. I'm going to go over some of the notable increases here in some of the departments. So the largest change by far of all of the departments is going to be that contribution to other funds. Again, the two primary indicators of that is that $1.65 million general fund contribution to the fire fund, as well as the $4 million contribution to capital from the ARPA allocation. Next, moving on to the sheriff department, we are seeing a $3.4 million increase or an 11.34% increase. Again, primarily due to the negotiated salary and employee benefit impacts of the DSA negotiations. And then we had some vehicle rollover purchases from last fiscal year, in addition to some annual maintenance and insurance for some of the purchases like the all-terrain vehicle and the helicopter and some of the airplane and things like that. Moving on to insurance, we have an increase of 822,000, which is 27.49%, primarily due to the increase in the insurance premiums that we're witnessing here. Moving on to the district attorney's office, we have an increase in general fund contributions of 1.38 million, which is 29.36%, again, primarily driven by the negotiated salary and benefit increases there. As well as we're seeing some decreases in the prison billing revenue due to some of the staffing shortages there in the department, as well as a reduction in the Violence Against Women Act or the VALE grant. So there's some grant revenue that we're no longer going to be receiving. And then the state had a clawback of their Victims of Crime Act funding or the VOCA funding. So we're receiving less revenue in that department. So that's again, causing a direct increase on the general fund to pick up what is being left on the table there in those areas. Moving on to the assessor, we're seeing roughly a $270,000 increase, which is 15.78%. So we're seeing a reduction in Senate Bill 2 revenue as well as a reduction in service fees from real estate filings. Moving on to elections, this is actually a positive change here. So it's a decrease in general fund contributions of 220,000 from last fiscal year, which is a decrease in general fund contributions of 18.60%. So with this being a general election year, those general election years generally bring more revenue than previous years. So there's more federal assistance to go ahead and administer those elections. So again, that's less general fund dollars that need to go to support those operations. Again, some more good news, moving on to the finance and HR systems budget unit. We're seeing a reduction of $178,000, about 42% from last year because we just recently paid off our financial software system, which is called One Solution. So we are no longer making payments on that. And then moving on to the finance department, we're seeing an increase of $260,000, which is 8.13%. Half of that is a $100,000 rollover from last fiscal year to go ahead and complete the fiscal year 2223 audit of our county financials. Moving on, got some more good news here on the consolidated court side. Again, this is our Defense of the Accused budget unit, seeing a reduction in general fund costs of $217,000, which is a reduction of 5.38%, primarily due to, as your board is aware, we've been bringing new agreements for our contracted attorneys to your board that has a little bit of a different billing structure than we've used in the past. So we anticipate a reduced amount of billing in those contracts than what we've had structurally in the past. So moving on to our parks and recreation budget unit, we're seeing an increase of about 131,000, which is about 11.07%, primarily due to some minimum wage increases and some utility rate increases there in the department. And then moving on to ag commissioner, we do have an increase in this year's net county cost from last year's net county cost of about 277,000, which is 21.59%, primarily driven by the negotiated salary increases in flexible promotions and increases in some of the internal service fund charges at the county like motor pool and information technology. And then your board's budget, we're seeing an increase of 150,000 in net county costs when compared to last fiscal year's net county cost, which is an increase of 13.75%, primarily driven by the addition of one FTE in the board budget, which is a deputy clerk to the board. And then lastly, on the general fund revenue side, this is actually good news here. So this only accounts for revenue and doesn't account for expenses. So we're seeing an $11 million increase there, which is an increase of 15.48%. Again, primarily driven by 4 million of that is the one-time ARPA contribution to the capital outlay fund. And again, just general increases in property tax, sales and use tax, and our hazardous waste taxes in the county. And then moving on, it's the same outline as the last slide, but this is for all of our internal service funds. So these are impacts on those internal service funds. So these are not impacts on the general fund, but only impacts on the internal service funds such as fleet, public works, IT, stuff like that. So again, some notable increases there. We're seeing in the public works fleet fund, we're seeing a reduction in the draw on their ISF fund balance of 288,000, about 19.26%. So they're seeing a reduced request for vehicle replacements in previous years and just the general slowing of purchasing vehicles. Moving on to our health insurance ISF, we're seeing a reduction of a need for the ISF contributions there of about $1.75 million, which is 351.26%. So due to the health insurance rate increase that we saw this year to cover the, the amount of use and the demand for that, that's increased rate revenue coming in from the departments that is, again, no longer needing to be borne by the fund balance of that ISF itself. Moving on to information technology, I kind of just summed all of the information technology ones up in, in a whole there because they all draw off the same fund balance there for the ISF. So they're seeing a reduced amount in their ISF needs of 85.9,000, which is 1,216% decrease. So they're needing less contributions from their ISF fund balance because they're kind of restructuring their service model. You know, given the, given the advancements in technology and how things have been changing, they're kind of restructuring the way they're doing business. And so that has caused them to kind of look at their staff structure. And there's actually a reduction of one of the positions in that department. So that's the, the primary cause of why they're no longer needing so much reliance on their fund balance there. And then lastly there, the liability self-insurance budget there. So this actually is just accounting for all of the departments paying for their rates for the general liability claim increases that we've been seeing here across the county. So, you know, that is going to leave the ISF at a net zero, meaning they're collecting enough to cover what is anticipated in paying out all of those claims. So that ends it for me and I'm going to pass it off. Oh yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Chairman, do the check. Matthew, off the top of your head, do you know what the 150,000 cost increase is on the board of supervisors budget?
Yeah, so that was primarily driven, that's the difference between the net county cost of what's built into this budget versus what was adopted last fiscal year. And so that increase is primarily driven by the addition of the one FTE clerk to the board staff in the, the department. So you previously had one deputy clerk to the board, now you have two deputy clerks to the board.
Got it. I was, I know there's no impacts from our salaries and there's no COLA to the board and travel's been down since the pandemic. All right. Thank you.
Correct, yes. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Tomas. Take it away.
For the board, Tomas Barajas, administrative analyst with Kings County Administration. The following charts were outlined the county proposed total final expenditures and financing sources, the total general fund expenditures and financing sources, discretionary expenses, and the overall position allocations that is needed to operate the function of the county. The overall proposed final budget total is 516 million, or about 54 million more than last year's adopted budget of 462 million. The general fund final budget is at 396 million or approximately 36 million more than last year's adopted budget of 260 million. Next slide, please. This chart reflects all proposed final expenditures in the county, which is 515.97 million. This includes all general funds, special revenues, library, road, fire, trouble gaming, family support, job training, capital project funds, and debt service funds. Starting off with general government, it is at 51 million or 10%. Public safety, 138 million or 27%. Public transportation, 19 million or 4%. Health, 76 million or 15%. Public assistance, 139 million or 27%. Education and recreation, 7 million or 1%. Capital projects, 35 million or 7%. All other, 52 million or 10%. Next slide, please. In this chart, we see all the proposed final financing sources, which is 515.97 million. It includes all general funds, special revenues such as library, road, fire, fire, trouble gaming, family support, job training, capital project funds, and debt service funds. Starting off with fund balance, we have 61 million or 12%. State and federal, 271 million or 53%. Public safety, sales tax of 13 million or 3%. Hazardous waste tax, 2 million or .33%. General taxes, 77 million or 15%. Charges for services, 17 million or 3%. Other revenue, 76 million or 15%. Next slide, please. In this chart, we have the proposed final general fund expenditures, which is 395.63 million. Starting off with general government, we have 37 million or 10%. Public assistance, 135 million or 35%. Health, 76 million or 20%. Education, recreation of 4 million or 1%. Public safety, 126 million or 32%. Debt services, 1 million or .28%. And contingencies at 11 million or 3%. Next slide, please. In this chart, we have the proposed final general fund financing sources, which is 395.63 million. Starting off with state and federal, we have 230 million or 58%. Public safety, safety sales tax, 11 million or 3%. Hazardous waste tax, 2 million or .43%. General taxes at 63 million or 16%. Charges for service and fees, 16 million or 4%. Other revenues of 46 million or 12%. Fund balance of 29 million or 7%. Next slide, please. Now we passing on to Veronica.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Veronica Mello, administrative analyst at the county administrative office. This is chart five discretionary expenses. This chart identifies the proposed final general fund expenditures for fiscal year 2425. It points out that 82% or 320.19 million of the budget has very little discretion. Only 69.34 million or 18% of the budget contains discretionary programs that are subject to reduction. The following departments receive the most discretionary funds in ascending order from top to bottom. Starting with the sheriff's office at 16.84 million. Contributions to other funds at 12.92 million. Contingencies at 11 million, probation at 6.76 million. District attorney at 6.08 million. And Department of Finance at 3.47 million. Also, the assessor at 1.85 million. Human resources at 1.8 million. County administrative office at 1.58 million. Ag commissioner at 1.56 million. Parks and grounds at 1.32 million. Board of Supervisors at 1.25 million. County council at 1.11 million. Planning at 1.09 million. Ag extension services at .29 million. Financial and HR service systems at .25 million. Support for organizations at .05 million. And recorder at .12 million. And with that, I pass it on to Giselle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Giselle Coy, administrative analyst, Kings County Administration. Here we have the position changes for final budget. Our recommendation includes 1,707.51 full-time equivalents, which accounts for 118.60 adds and 110.40 deletes, resulting in an 8.20 FTE increase in positions for fiscal year 202425. The vast majority of the adds and deletes are transfers of existing positions between the budget units in a department. We have 12.0 FTE unfunded in this proposed final at the request of Public Health to evaluate program needs. Next slide, please. In fiscal year 202324, we adopted 1,689.31 FTE. And after the budget was adopted, your board approved a net total of 10.0 FTE change throughout the fiscal year. The changes throughout this fiscal year bring the amended fiscal year 202324 total to 1,699.31. The net change of 8.20 FTE from the previous slide brings our proposed final FTE allocations for fiscal year 202425 to 1,707.51 FTE. Next slide, please. And now I will pass it back to Kiriya.
So Mr. Chairman, that summarizes our presentation for your board.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Next one will be a public hearing at 10 o'clock. So if there are no questions or comments, you wouldn't go recess for a while or?
So we just request your board, if you want to like do a temporary do pass for the entire budget, then we can bring back the resolution on the 17th.
Okay. If we're at that point, Mr. Chair, my comments would be brief. One, good job to you, all, all the staff and all the department heads who, who do a lot of the, the work upfront and communicate with admin. And a big thank you to our county employees as well who have been working through the process with everybody. Kiriya, Madam CEO, as we move forward, one thing that I don't want to get lost in the mix, and I know we only talked in general, but a couple budgets ago, the board approved a fight to go after financing plan for, to get the curb gutter and sidewalks completed in the community of Kettlemann City. So I know we tried, we ran into some issues as it relates to getting our debt organized and you're working hard to get that organized. Can you just give us an update on that?
So we continue to contribute to it every year. The balance still remains there. We're hoping that once our financials are, you know, completed, then we can go ahead and start issuing any debt for that, should your board choose to.
You're not just moving off an approval that we already have, like there's, is there a plan for you to, we're not actively seeking financing for that right now?
When we tried with USDA, they wanted us to, because that's who we were going to use as a source. They wanted us to have our financials completed and so that process is, is literally in, I'm looking at Eric, the finance director, because we literally just completed it.
All right. So, you know, I started last year, we issued 22 in May. 23 we issued probably this week and then we'll be on time for 24 to be issued in March.
Okay. What, do you have anything to add to the question that I have as far as when we can go back and try to get financing approved?
I mean, we're, we're almost there, we're almost caught up. I don't know what USDA requires there, you know, that organization probably has a grant that, that has the requirements for it. So I'd have to look at it first, but yeah, I think we're at a point now where you can probably start looking at it.
Because the board, we're putting away money, right?
Right.
100,000 a year and one Kettlemann infrastructure fund. And so if you get the loan, we have the monies already in budget to make the payments on the loan, correct?
Yes, correct. That's correct. So once we get our finances completed, then we can reach out to USDA and see the process of applying for those funds.
Two months, four months, six months?
Probably within the next, well, we would have to talk, contact USDA, so, you know, have a initial meeting with them. So I say within maybe then, before the end of the year, we can have, start the discussions with USDA.
In your opinion, that's the best funding source or are there other avenues to get the credit?
I mean, we can issue debt, you know, with any kind of, any bank. The issue with that is that, you know, interest rates are like very high right now. And so we wanted to go the USDA route because we are a government agency, so we would get better rates. And so I think the USDA route is probably the best.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that it's noted, this is my 16th budget and 16th year in a row trying to get that done. And that's a lot of time to be going after one, one thing. But I appreciate the progress and support of the board over the years. We got a little bit done, we're getting some things done, but I want to see that community done before I leave.
No.
If I don't leave, then you'll be stuck with me.
No.
Get it done and I'll disappear.
I think, I think like Eric mentioned.
Yeah.
We couldn't, we couldn't issue debt, you know, that was.
The coast, you won't see me.
Once we get our financials, we can issue debt. I think that was the biggest hurdle. I mean, in 2020, we couldn't issue debt then and then COVID hit. And then now we're at a point where finally like all our debts falling off, everything's looking good, so we can issue more debt.
Okay. And then my last thing, that's not for this budget, this is in general, you're doing a good job. What's this, your second budget?
A CEO's second, I think overall, I think I started in doing 2016, 17 budget.
Okay.
So seventh.
My only ask to put on the horizon, yes, and this is, everyone's already, you know, come to the table, they're asking. Some folks got increases already, some, you know, I hope good fair negotiations tend to go and produce a little more for our employees. But one thing I think we all saw with the ARPA funds, I know they're, they're going to be gone. But I think we all got to do something good for our communities through ARPA. Like we were getting asked for things like roofs, AC repairs, parking lot repairs throughout the county. And it was nice to be able to say, whoa, there's this pot of money and let's work and let's get them the money. And one thing that we've never had similar to other counties, and as we're getting a little healthier, I think that formula there, and I'm not talking the amount of those millions of dollars we had in ARPA, but it'd be nice seeing the budget, $250,000, a total of 1.25 million, 250,000 for each district that's put in the budget. So as things come up, there's, we know there's at least a small amount, that's a very small amount of money. And I'm looking at if we're generously taking some of our monies and, and padding contingencies, because contingencies is padding. And that's money that more than likely is not going to be used, it's going to come back. I think that even if we did it today, that 11 million in contingencies minus 1.25 million wouldn't be hurting anybody. No one's going to be missing any meals over that, but it would be nice for the board to have our own budgets that would still go through an agendized process of, hey, look, out of this 250,000, so-and-so supervisor has been requested 45,000 for this community. And then that way, that's a public spending of it, but I'd like to see that there in the general. But I'd like to see that there in the general near future, and it's, we know other counties do it, and we never have, but I think that's respectful to each board member, and I think we end up spending that kind of money anyways, but it'd be nice to have that for each of us. Thank you. Other than that, Mr. Chair, good work, and just good day.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've moved temporary due pass on the, uh, legend.
Moved by, temporary, temporary due pass by Senator Neves, second by Senator Robinson. That important, please call the roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, five in favor. We have temporary due pass on entire budget at one time, so, very good. At this time, we'll go ahead and take a brief recess until ten AM, and we'll come back and do the two public hearings.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 10:00 AM and we have a public hearing and this is item A administration and we're going to do Veronica. Veronica Mello. Morning Veronica.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Veronica Mello, administrative analyst here at the County of Kings. On June 21st, 2005, your board adopted ordinance number 633 for developmental impact fees. To collect such fees annually, staff must present an updated construction schedule and budget report for impact fees. In your packet, you have an agenda item, a copy of the resolution and several exhibits. Exhibit A is the construction schedule. Ordnance number 633 requires the development of a construction schedule to be reviewed by your board annually. Exhibit B is the fee table, which is updated by using the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, commonly referred to as ENR CCI, for the City of Los Angeles and the City of San Francisco. Staff recommends the public facility fee increase of 6.22%. This was determined by utilizing the CCI annual average from April 2023 to March 2024. It's important to note that this does not include a fee increase for the library, but a reduction of 12.526% due to the recently adopted NEXIS study. The county collects public facility fees from Hamford, LeMour, Corcoran, and most recently, the City of Avonel. I'd like to go over the fee increases for the past five years. In 2019, CCI called for a 2.16% increase, which your board chose to adopt. In 2020, CCI called for a 3.5% 3.58% fee increase. Your board chose not to adopt a fee and remain at the 2019 levels. In 2021, CCI called for a 1.59% fee increase. Your board chose not to adopt a fee increase due to wage and construction cost increases. In 2022, CCI called for a 12.61% increase. Your board chose not to adopt a fee increase due to economic uncertainty and a predicted recession. It was discussed that this should be looked at in a year. In 2023, staff did not bring an agenda item for your board's consideration of an impact fee increase, and this was due to the NEXIS study being underway. Going over to exhibit C, Impact Fee Financial Report. It shows the history of the financials for the developmental impact fees since 2005, 2006. We have accumulated about $13,261,986 in impact fees, and this includes interest. To date, $6,644,632 has been encumbered or spent, leaving a balance of $6,617,354 as of June 30th, 2024. With that said, this brings me to exhibit D, Public Facility Fee Change Calculations. This was updated by using the annual average of the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index from April 2023 to March 2024. Let's go over the history of the projects spent by impact fees. These are the completed projects. Miners Advocate and District District Attorney's Relocation. This began in 2007, 2008 and involved relocating the Miners Advocate Office to a larger location and remodeling the existing Miners Advocate Office space for you for use by the district attorney. These two projects were completed in 2008, 2009. This project was funded by $163,905 in public protection fees. Morgue relocation began in fiscal year 2011, 2012. This project was funded by $390,000 in public protection fees. Jail expansion began in 2011, 2012. This project was funded by approximately $2.3 million dollars in public protection fees and was completed in fiscal year 2015, 2016. The approximate total construction cost was $33.2 million. In progress and future projects, Juvenile Center Juvenile Center remodel project construction began 2011, 2012, 2021, 2022. A total of $3,718,340 in impact fees were used to fund this project. This project is approximately $20.1 million in total and is estimated to be completed this fall. Sheriff Sheriff's Evidence Base, a permanent facility, is still needed in fiscal year 2023, 24. Budget included $1,340,709 and is estimated to begin within the next year or two. There are future projects that have yet to begin and are included in the construction schedule. See exhibit A, Fee Construction Schedule. As far as the five-year report, the next one will be due in 2025 as the current one was completed and approved by your board in 2021. For this hearing, the required 14-day notices were mailed out on August 9th. Notices were mailed to the Building Industry Association of Telerian Kings Counties, the gas company, the cities of Corcoran, Hamford, LeMour and Avonel. We also had the notice published in the Hamford Sentinel on August 10th, 2024. With that said, staff is recommending that your board conduct a public hearing to receive testimony on the developmental impact fees, which includes a construction schedule of public facilities and a proposed adjustment to the fees. Adopt a resolution approving the new construction schedule and an annual inflationary increase in the county's impact fees. And select one of the following options in relation to adjusting the development impact fees. Option one, adjusting the development impact fee amounts based on the annual average in the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index, a 6.22% increase, having the new fees become effective October 25th, 2024. Option two, implement the maximum justified fees as described in the recent NEXIS study, which are significantly significantly higher than the staff recommendation. Option three, adopt no fee increase and impact fees will remain at the October 10th, 2022 levels. This concludes my presentation. If your board has any questions regarding the NEXIS study, we have a representative from Weldon Financial in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to board at this time? Nothing? Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing. At this time, do we have any written correspondence?
I've received no written correspondence. I have no speaker cards and no one online has their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience like to speak on this issue? Nobody? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for board decision.
Mr. Chair, while while I understand all of the different calculations, I think I find it kind of somewhat change strange that San Francisco is at 1.3, Los Angeles is 11.5. We're kind of between the two metropolitan agencies. We continue to struggle with financing. I would propose for discussion of 5% stay. While I understand that we need to grow and we need to be able to keep up our construction costs, prevailing wage, all of the other problems we have, but a lot of the land costs are a little bit more affordable. So most of the time we develop our own property though, so I understand that, but taking that all under consideration, I would propose a 5% increase.
Okay, any more discussion?
No, I I do have one question. I I like your proposal, but the NEXIS study, I I not that we would we would look at the maximum fees, but what are they? But what is the average of?
Okay, thank you for asking. In the incorporated residential area of the county, it's $10,089 is the maximum fee justified per the NEXIS study. And then it gets lower when you talk about retail office and industrial spaces. Do you want to know those as well?
It's still pretty high. Hopefully the feds will drop the interest rates and hopefully it'll make free up some money and hopefully it'll be a little bit easier. It's always difficult for government because of prevailing wage and and everybody has to pay in the the increased construction costs and increases of all the costs there and the availability of electric components as we know on a couple of projects we have going now, but again, I think 5% is is 80 about 80% of where we're at at the 6.2, so. I I could very easily say zero again, but I think it's important that the government has a fund to be able to replace some of these buildings and be able to do some of the things we need to do in the future. And and again, I would justify that, that if we do have to purchase property, the purchase price of property in Kings County would probably be less than LA and San Francisco.
It is today.
Correct, absolutely.
So this is our main revenue for the fire fund, correct?
No. This is construction, this new construction, library, animal control.
Public facility fees.
Public facilities.
We haven't done an increase in years, correct, 2020? So and I add those up that they pose, we'd have been 20%, correct? So we do five now, that's not much, correct? But they're forecasting 6.2, right? Correct. We do five, we're still doing the favor, allowing construction to to we're still on their side and not harm them.
And that adds that adds $10,000 to the cost of a house. Which again, is to to me pretty significant. A lot of times.
20%, so you figure that we've also done good and not increasing it over the years.
Correct, exactly. We we've tried to encourage affordable housing. We've tried to encourage housing in general. But you know, they used to say that every, you know, every, I think it was 2% added to the cost of us construction, put 10% of the people out of being able to to qualify for that house. And I'm not sure that that ratio is the same anymore, but I know when we, of course, it's been 30 years, but when we built the houses in Stratford, we were having to get six or seven applications to get one approval. And I know recently you you receive a lot of applications before you find a family that qualifies. And so every dollar that you increase to that construction cost just makes affordable housing a little bit more unaffordable in my mind, so it makes it difficult.
You know, there's usually a rep from BIA here for this part of the budget, right?
They'll show up next week.
They were invited. They were invited.
Correct.
They just didn't come today.
They were aware of the proposed.
Yep, and all the city managers also were notified.
Correct.
So where I see it, we have a motion for 5% at this point from supervisor Nevz.
Second as amended.
Second by supervisor Robinson. Any further questions? And of course, please call a roll.
Joe Nevz.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Five in favor. We're going to move on now to the next public hearing, which is going to be by Matthew Boyett. Morning, Matthew.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boyett again, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. So the Human Resources Agency is requesting a transfer of 10% of health realignment funds and 10% of behavioral health realignment funds into their social services trust for this fiscal year 2425 budget. So Assembly Bill 1491 established the realignment of certain health, mental health and social service programs. And they actually had some dedicated revenues for that, which is the half cent sales tax and some vehicle license fee revenue. AB 1491 also allowed for the 10% transfer between the health, behavioral health and social service trusts as needed for the local jurisdictions programs. So recently, we have actually been, you know, approving or your board has been approving transfers of the 10% dating back to fiscal year 1819 and fiscal year 1920 more recently, although we've been doing this for years. However, due to COVID in fiscal year 2021, these transfers were suspended because everybody was hurting at that time. Revenues were down. So both behavioral health and public health needed as much as possible. So the health transfer at that time during COVID was completely suspended. And the behavioral health transfer was reduced from the 10% that we've historically seen. It was it was reduced down to 5%. So shortly thereafter, in fiscal year 2223, the federal medical assistance percentage or what we or what we refer to as the FMAP percentage there for the local and federal programs increased. So the feds increased their share of the 50% fed, 50% local programs to help local jurisdictions during the financial hardships of COVID. So we were getting a little bit of a break over the last couple of years in these programs. So now that a lot of that has kind of come to a close, that FMAP increase that we have been receiving over the last couple of years ended December of '23. So now, you know, that increase, since it's gone away, that's a direct, you know, increase on our side now. So although it's still what we've traditionally paid in in a sense from the 50/50 standpoint, it's just the the break that we've been getting over the past couple of years. You know, now the the chicken has come home to roost and that's all being borne on us again this year. So that's why you know, we're, you know, reinvigorating the discussions of the transfers between health, behavioral health to the social services trust. So with that, it's estimated that this transfer of the 10% health and 10% of behavioral health realignment into the social services trust is going to be roughly about 605,000 from the Public Health Realignment Trust and about 304,000 from the Behavioral Health Realignment Trust. So altogether, you're looking at about $909,000 being allocated out of the Behavioral Health and Health Realignment Trusts into the social security, uh, social services trust there. And so there's a need for this primarily as a result of just net expenditure growth beyond the dedicated revenue sources to fund these entitlement programs at the Human Services Agency. So we're seeing, you know, pretty significant caseload growth in our categorical aid entitlement programs as in, as I mentioned before, the the state dedicated revenue for those entitlement programs isn't necessarily keeping up their end of the bargain, which is causing more and more of a strain on us here at home. So this proposed reallocation must be based on the most cost-effective use of the available resources to actually maximize the client outcomes. And so we've met both with behavioral health and public health to go over what's being proposed this morning. Both of them are fine with it for this fiscal year 2425 budget. It's not going to have any adverse impacts on their operations. And to note, if we didn't approve or if your board didn't approve this transfer this morning, then that $909,000 would need to come from somewhere. It would have to get picked up. So more than likely, that would be a direct general fund impact. So with that, the recommendation before your board this morning is to conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the realignment fund transfer and find that the transfer of the realignment funds is is of the most cost-effective use of available resources to maximize client outcomes and approve the 10% transfer of realignment revenues deposited into the Public Health Realignment Trust to be directed to the Social Services Trust account for fiscal year 2425 and approve the 10% transfer of the realignment revenue deposited into the Behavioral Health Realignment Trust into the Social Services Trust account for fiscal year 2425. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions or comments from board? Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any written or?
I have no written correspondence, no speaker cards and no one online has their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience like to speak on this item today? Shame on. We'll close the public hearing and go back for direction for the board.
Moves presented, Mr. Chair.
With vice president Nevz, second vice vice for goodness, man of court, please call a roll.
Joe Nevz.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll adjourn and we'll see you here tomorrow. Thank you.